Here.
Again.
Here.
Sign.
Here.
Mormons.
Here.
Phil Piper.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Ray.
Yes.
Okay, number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes, Your Honor?
Uh, no changes. The move to approve. All roll.
Again.
Yes.
Sign.
Yes.
Mormons.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Okay, number three, presentation petitions and other communications. A, set up public hearing for April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, six P M. To the granting of easement to interstate power. Like, um, is that gonna call the roll?
Sign.
Yes.
Mormons.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Mormons.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Again.
Okay, B, set up public hearing for April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. On closed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate the cost of required department to build expansion project. So, second, call the roll.
Mormons.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Again.
Sign.
Yes.
Okay, number four, report of standing committees, A, press administration, D, go forward. Uh, B, public station transportation committee, Stephen. Yeah, we're evolution in your packet that will bring forth for raising the reimbursement amount for being a box damage claims. Had been for a number of years, five, that gentleman, Jake, help safety. Last week, we had his damn credit city. At the time he bought it, he reported about it was around eighty bucks. Kind of, uh, a little advice from our public works director. Perhaps maybe we need to raise that up. We have about eighty events a year, raise it up to a hundred dollars. So, that's not gonna cover those. You have a ones people like to make, but at that point, that's kind of their problem. That's gets up there with the higher fees for standing mailbox. So, any questions on that? I'm gonna make a motion to approve that resolution.
All right, send it.
All roll.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Sign.
Yes.
Mormons.
Yes.
And Julie, committee, Stephen. I don't, um, know report, but you all have a meeting on the thirteenth at four thirty-two. Okay. Okay, and so economic development committee.
There. Yeah, a couple of things here. Uh, this, we had a hundred in the packet, the twenty, twenty-one and ninety-two resolutions support the proposed terms, and it gave a great private development by between the state boom and boom, the, uh, and, uh, B J F, who's senior L P, over the housing project. Um, the committee moved it to bring this resolution to council and let Bill kind of do some.
Thank you, sir. So, this is a resolution of support for the senior housing project at twenty-second and Lynn. If you remember, those of you on council, at the time a year ago, we had one when they applied the first time. They're gonna be applying for the tax credits again. That deadline is May eighteenth. Uh, this is a similar, uh, resolution for support. The only difference is, uh, last year the project was five point eight million. This year it's risen to seven million. There'll be no additional, uh, tax rebates that we negotiated the first time, so they stay the same, but the project raises just over a million dollars. And the economic community recommended, uh, voted to recommend to council that the resolution of support, uh, be approved and the, uh, hopefully will be here by September this year for the, uh, the, the tax credits. And then, as you know, you have the, uh, family project up there that's, we've been drawn, and it's getting developed and agreements, and you've approved those. We hope to break ground on that in June.
Can you vote?
Yes.
So.
All roll.
Williamson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Again.
Yes.
Sign.
Yes.
Mormons.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Um, second thing on the agenda, the annexation request from Michael and Brenda Flutztad, um, after discussion in the, in the E D committee, uh, it was moved to deny that recommendation. And the reason, some of the reasons being is, I would want to visit that piece of property. Uh, it's within the city limits, however, it doesn't have, uh, sewer or water, city water, or, uh, any other services. The problem with this is that, uh, piece of property is in disrepair. They have dog kennels on there. They have, uh, cattle, chickens, and roosters, all in violation of the city code. Um, the, the, the dogs are unattended, knowing there's no house in there. Um, there's an old abandoned mobile home, a camping trailer, there's another, uh, rundown buildings and stuff. I went out and took a look at it because there were some complaints about the dogs and the rooster barking, not rooster, yeah, barking, and the rooster's crowing and stuff like that. Um, so, and I had a couple of complaints from the same person. In full disclosure, the person that had filed the complaint actually stole, uh, this person's property. He told me that hadn't known what was gonna happen to it, even if they sold it to him, but that's beside the point that, that shit was sale. Um, I think we have, we still have a sense of responsibility to the people that live in the city. Um, and if we deannex this, they will only bound by county rules and county is all about livestock and to him, it's more than that. Um, they're still bound by the same rules for the dogs, but, um, from what I saw out there, that's kind of a sketchy situation. Um, but that's why I was not in favor of this, you know, deannex and, and, and our discussion, the committee agreed, so we needed not to do this for.
So, if this is not approved, what, what, um, responsibility do they have? Do they have to move?
Well, city will have to go out and enforce this, and will have to get rid of the livestock and the chickens.
Has that been ongoing for a while?
We, and here to propose that as any other person in the city. But that was our recommendation. It certainly had to be special, yeah.
Pick up on, Mike, yeah.
What's the, uh?
Because you see Marion Street right here?
Yeah.
And it's called right here.
It's the police sign.
It's on the north side of the city. It's surrounded by county farms. Except for, that, that means, yeah, that little, uh, triangle where the city, it's the only thing that's seen.
What's the east, yes? Is that a house?
That is the city.
Right here. No, for the, I'm just, your, wait. Green. Yeah, that's green, that's my thought. Okay. I'm just orienting myself.
I'm gonna give the property other chance to speak. Brendan?
So, we own the property, I don't know, three or four years. Um, when we first purchased it, we bought it on a contract from Ross, and with the understanding we didn't do a whole lot of investigating, we assumed it was out in the entry place. Uh, the condition that it was when we bought it, uh, when we started clearing all the trees, brush, everything that is in there, we did find a nice shed there. Um, well, it wasn't nice at the time. We worked on it. Bought a couple houses for my grandson, because he shows how it was, that, very. Um, I went ahead and assuming, not, not realizing at the time that it was not in the city limits, or that it was in the city limits. I bought these two chickens, so I've been raising them, I don't know, three years, every, well, few months I actually bought those. Been gathering eggs and everything. The, the trailer that is out there is our camper, and we do stay out there in the summertime all, uh, on weekends. Um, sometimes during the weekends, just get up and go home and make shots with their work. Um, the dogs are out there to protect the livestock. I appreciate them being there, uh, when I'm in the shed with my chickens. One of them will start barking if someone comes around or comes down the road, um, and then I can peek out and see what's going on. Um, it is a mess right now. I do have to admit that, because of the thaw, everything's a muddy mess out there. Um, it was way overgrown with trees, brush, um, all kinds of stuff. We cleaned it up. When it's seeing Valley Railroad, it actually thanked us for cleaning up to do railroad as it runs, won't be signed later. Yeah, we just spent twenty-five hundred dollars putting, um, Z and water in there, so there's free hydrants. I'm out there every morning before I go to work. Both of us are out there every night after work. So, the dogs aren't really un, they're no more unattended than the dogs that I have. Um, they're fed, they're watered, they're let loose to run around, get exercise. I guess, I, I guess I don't know what else to say. Other than the fact that we haven't had them out there, we were told we wouldn't have any problems out there. Yes, like I said, it is, I have a mess out there right now because it's so muddy. And it's very muddy in the yard and the driveway, but we did, uh, make a water lines, so it's gonna take a while for that, so, the grass. Everything, I mean, to the east of us is the only thing that is considered city. Uh, what I was told, whether this is true or not, um, before Ross bought the place, um, and Aaron's owned that place, um, it used to be considered in the, not in the city limits. He decided when, when Z and water was coming through, that he didn't want Z and water, he wanted city water. So, he was able to, and that was the whole, the whole triangle there. He was able to get it all considered, I don't know how you would call it, annexed into the city, so he did not have the Z and water. And then when Ross sold it, so nicely, split it, he split it down there, and so it's the very end of it. There's cornfield and a junk pile across the river, junk. Um, cornfield across the river, and, um, cornfield the other way. Um, that, to the east of us, all the way up to Ross's house, is a hay field. Um, prior, prior to the last two years, it was a cornfield. Yeah, and counting the same there, and all the way out, then. I mean, I do, I, I understand that Ross has a problem with it, and we're willing to work with Ross, um, to try and, uh, we're gonna be cleaning it up, we're gonna be doing a lot more stuff to it, and, well, this is money, it takes time. But it's kind of a long ways from what we've got. You can even walk the, because of all the brush, trees, everything. Just for reconsideration. So, my answer is, yeah. Just for clarification, so, because I did, so this is property that's actually in the city, in the city limits, and then it's, the animals are in violation of the city imposed ordinance for livestock. Is that what I'm understanding? That's what I'm just, I didn't understand. So, really, you can't have cows.
You have a question. It's not really a question of the condition of the site, it's more the animals that are there, the, that the, that they have animals there rather than the state of, you know, it's like you're, you're saying you're fixing it all up, but that's not really the issue here. The issue is the, the animals, the barking dogs and crows.
We do have our college one dogs, actually, so. And there's two dogs out there, that's it. One is to help us with, with guarding, like I said. The other one, um, is if the cow break it out, he takes them back in for us, which has happened. They go for fences sometimes. I mean, they can always go back home if the dogs can, but if we don't have anything hard, since we don't live out there, that's why we want something, something out there.
So, the existing regulations are what they are, depending on whether it's in city limits or not. The question I ask myself, would it benefit the city if we did deannex this property, considering that if we're going to have growth, that's in the future, that property's gonna be annexed right back in eventually? Um, and I wouldn't wanna see it go back and, and, you know, revisit this where that becomes a sticking point. Let me, or do housing development or something like that, or go with less than a town. So, that's an initial thought I had, yes.
Well, it's part of the package, so.
The only question I have is, I guess, then if the situation changed, they could request again. I mean, if you come up again.
And I, I would gladly reach out to Ross and see if the situation's approved.
Right.
Because my initial conversation with him, with him was, is that he reached out to, I can grant that a minute, got no response. Now, I don't know if that's true or not.
No, I, we, we went out and put bark dollars on the dog. We, and.
So, I, like you said, I'd, I would gladly reach out to Ross again to find out if the situation.
Right, but I'd say this could come up again, and, and, and if the situation changed, it could be a different, yeah, whatever.
Still, though, even if the animals were not there and wasn't cleaned up, I don't see what benefit it is to the city to have that deannex.
So, I, I guess I'm, I'm confused on your question there. I mean, the benefit of the city to have it deannexed? A tax of three hundred dollars a year, um, two months. What's, what's the benefit for this city to keep it, city? When I get no cities, you know, there's, there's none of these services there. None whatsoever.
How we make care of the road.
Well, we still have the responsibility to, to the people that live in the city limits that filed the complaint.
Oh, I understand.
And if we deannex, the city loses any control over what's going on in that piece of property.
So, I can also tell you that where our property is, I can hear cows and everything from closer to the city. Um, there's, there's, like, on, on West Tenth Street and Marion Street, which is further, now even closer to the city, they have cows. I, I think they resell, I don't know.
There's now a lot of cows.
There is, there's.
All for.
And I, I don't wanna be a bad neighbor. I don't. Not wanna get along with everybody, 'cause his family also lives on the corner of fifteenth and Marion Street, just north of Ross. They don't have any problems, they don't hear them. You can stop at the, stop signing there, um, and listen. Can you? Derek, can you state your case again and just say what the, what your committee recommends and why?
Mine is based on the language requirements of the neighbor, the barking dogs and crows. And, and they have livestock, sorry. Both of which are dangerous, both of which are against city. General, that chap, was, 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 which kind of stuff. And that's where I found this point. So, when, when that happened, I drove out there to take their property, see if it's true, see if the dogs were barking, if, uh, roosters were crawling. And yes, the roosters were crawling, they do, and the dogs were pretty calm when we were out there, um, barking, barking, but, um, I'm just going by. Yeah. If we deannex, I don't see that those complaints are gonna stop. I, I can tell him that we no longer have jurisdiction over that, but I, it's still. And that, that's why we brought this.
It's too bad there's not some type of compromise working with your neighbor, trying to figure out, but if you don't de, deannex, or if we do, we allow that to happen. You're right, we don't have, well, it's all because of complaints, so it does.
Right.
So, point three. It's too bad neighbor can't work with, I don't know. It's, you know.
Well, had, had, had they're not, had, had, uh, yeah.
I understand.
Question, if you're, if you're not, I think, just continue like this. So.
So, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
And I don't want bash Ross or.
No.
When we first got the chickens, he let us leave them in the street house, so without warmout, too. So, that's, I don't really, really.
Strange, kind of, with.
If he has, he has to come and help us take care of the cows and put the hay in there. I, I'm really confused why I, I went this far.
I, I, and I don't, I, I have no idea what you're saying.
I don't agree with that, and.
So.
And I, I, I mean, like, if, if we're able to deannex and get the, uh, be able to keep our stuff, I, my plan, I don't know if this is gonna help, but it's not gonna hurt, is putting privacy defense up on the east side of it, to try and keep noise out.
And we got it. Well.
I would love to work with them on it.
I'll probably do this. Okay. We think about table this and have city staff on Ross. I don't know that it helps anything, but still think, I wonder if it like, oh, I don't know.
Well, and see if, see if the problem system's deciding, because they, they put bark dollars on, so that probably.
Can I say one more? It's kind of a funny, when, when, when it's sitting better, it comes out, a lot of times they will stop. I don't know if they're waiting for more trains and stuff to switch track or what they're done, but the kids will hang out and look at the livestock, look at the animals, and we, we, we didn't have a horse and donkey out there, but we didn't get rid of them. And they would, they won't see them, they were starting in those noises, how we try and get them.
The problem is that they should've never been in there in the first place.
I understand that. Like I said, when we first got it and bought it on contract, we didn't realize that it was a sentence, so.
I do have a problem with selectively enforcing, especially with very large livestock like that.
Oh, yeah.
Key problem. Well, my, my. Privacy defense and neighbor complaint aside, you know.
So, I, it's my, my only issue, my only issue, I think it's a whole, whole side, and I understand, you have a complaint, we want to deal with that appropriately. However, if you don't, if we, if you don't deannex it, then we have to deal with it, and then it takes us city time, city effort for a piece of land sit out there surrounding that, you know. I'm just trying to think of myself, I'm not sure. But, you know, that, that's just another way to look at it, I guess, that, uh. So, maybe we, maybe that's a good idea that. We have a complaint, we can help with that, but, uh, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna shy away, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Well, the county's not gonna address chickens or, no, they won't.
Well, it's not, it'll be theirs, you know. I guess, or I would say, like, I have horses surrounding me everywhere, so I don't, I don't know, I can deal with that, but it doesn't matter to me, I guess. I'm trying to buy livestock, so.
Well, it's opposite decision. I, I, yeah, I mean, I can, I can.
Only thing I can say, I like the idea of enabling it by making recommendations, because there were animal concerns, and whether they're, we were there, gone or whatever, therefore not here for this, he can make two stories, and so the city will definitely investigate. My opinion, for our decisions today, is it doesn't sound like anybody here is really investigated. And we have, we have the owners here, but we don't have the other side. The other side is time for the party.
We don't have to, so.
You know, more comfortable thinking about it and drawing the table, if we've done it same time.
So, to move this along, I'll make a letter to the, a motion to table this, let staff investigate, meet with the complaint, the person that filed the complaint, and see if this can be resolved.
How's that gonna get?
That's the call roll.
Ray.
Yes.
Bert.
Yes.
Again. Sign.
Yes.
Mormons.
Yes.
Phil Piper.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
We'll put it on the next agenda, revisit, I reserve a time. Get the city staff on the, I, I, that's, see what, I don't know, again, I guess.
Thank you for listening.
One more thing, Your Honor. Um, this past week, uh, we met, I met as a member of C B B board, along with Chris Block, and we met with Kelly Malliter of Farmer's Market and Mike Hammon, who were chamber, regarding Farmer's Market downtown, and their application, or request to do First Thursday, continue First Thursday at that space. The problem with that was, there's a scheduled C B B event is on the first Friday, so naturally it was a direct conflict with what that, that event, that C B B was planned. We, uh, discussed it and said, and Chris, Kelly and Chris had met and talked about it, and Chris said that she wanted to, uh, discuss it before we get back to Kelly on, on the decision, but for the most part, that decision would probably be no, given the logistics and the timeframe of the two events side by side. Mike reached out with an email about it, wanted to have a meeting with Chris. Um, I told Chris that I would gladly attend that meeting as C B B chair and as a member of the C B B board, which they did. And that's, um, on last Friday. Um, last Friday. When you, it's my opinion that when our council was just, just decommissioned, First Thursdays went with them. We turned this space over to C B B, council voted to do that. We turned this space over to C B B, they agreed to take it. We had offered this space to Chamber on three different occasions, and on three different occasions, they turned it down. So, C B B took it, said that they would do that, take the event and run with it, they moved the event to Friday, and that seems to be the main concern. In our discussions about this, this event, we expressed our concern about having competing events at the screen space, and didn't think it was a very good idea. I think personally, that I think it's a, it's a kind of disingenuous for this council to vote to give C B B this space and that event, and then turn around and grant another entity space to do a similar event, a competition. It kind of, kind of undermines what our intent was for this space. Um, I understand the concerns about First Thursdays, I, I totally understand that, but I think we owe it to C B B to not undermine what they're trying to accomplish with this space, given the fact that we did this. We asked them to do it, and this council voted to approve it.
Can I ask you a question? Do you not think the community and support two events in the month? Because I think the discussion was, my understanding was, it was not gonna be back to back, which I don't think would work, to have Thursday and then Friday, the next night, have two events, but, all right, I guess.
But, I, I guess, is your understanding that Boon would not be able to support an event maybe the first week? And another event the third week, two events in the autumn or the summer? Because I think space, it could be certainly worked out.
Yeah, it was so, it was so successful. Everyone says it was. Then why didn't they schedule a second event last season?
Two of them, I don't think they need two of those. And, and because they were a small group just handling what they had. So if somebody else wants to come in and do another, I'm just asking, do you think we wouldn't be able to?
What I'm asking is, is why didn't Farmers Market sponsor a second event than last season?
I, and I, my response is, I think they were just getting this first one up and going, and they found it was very successful. They hadn't even proven this first event to see if it worked, and it didn't.
And I would agree with that, then why aren't we giving CDB the same opportunity to do one event and establish themselves?
And I, I guess, I think, I mean, we are, I just didn't know if, if the understanding was we couldn't do two events in one month. And that sounds, it sounds like we're saying, no, we really feel that one event is, is what people would attend. I don't know, I, I know people were thrilled to have something.
Right, and that, that will continue.
The other, the other.
This will be much larger, I believe, time will be five, nine, ten, so it's two hours. It's gonna be a big event. And so here's my question, why doesn't Farmer's Market just do their thing on Friday? And join along with CDB? And it's.
You know, I.
How many years now have you had it on Thursday?
Thirty years. And we talked about this when we did the market street closure. There's zero in Farmers Markets in the entire, entire state of Iowa on Friday. All of my Keystone vendors have other Farmers Markets that they find out on Saturday. They can't do the Keystone, my Keystone vendors do, are they? Not all of them, not all of the Farmers Market vendors find out on Saturday. Reinhart's has their drive-through market, Wilbers have their store, and Keller's, Ben &amp; Ains. Those are my three big producers. That's what most people come for, is those folks. So we, we couldn't move to Fridays. I would lose my market and my vendors if we could do Fridays.
Yeah, listen, I, I, here, here's my opinion, I just, I'm kind of jaded on some of that stuff. This stuff, they've been talking about this stuff over and over for a long time. Here's the deal, we made a deal. There was nothing about that, nothing. One thing. He said, and I know it was brought up in an email, I think you sent. That, he said that the first Thursday was continued. Well, not really, First Thursdays was just kind of a, a word given to that, but it didn't necessarily mean that that's what we're gonna do. Farmers Market has done Thursdays for many, many years, and been successful. We got you down there by Papa Murphy's, let you come up town last year. Have any complaints, that's why we passed that, because that you had to shut the door off. All right? But there's something else more foot here in this stuff, with groups that always wanna be in competition with one another. I don't care what you say, because I know them. All right?
We look like the ones together.
We have one group. We're gonna let this, this group go, but I'm, I'm here to tell you, it's not gonna happen this year. You got your one block, and if it's not good enough, we're gonna take another look at that other block, and see if that's where you need to be. That's my opinion. I'm tired of this, that door and stuff, it's always going on in this town, once a couple factions. It's getting old. And it's taking up a lot of city time, where we can deal with other things that are far more important than this. That's it. I couldn't have said any better, I, I just think we owe it to CDB to allow them to establish themselves this year. Always reevaluating that Linda's end of the year to next year. But for now, my recommendation is that we, we allow CDB to establish. Support that. We're the ones that voted to get it. We're the ones that they were generous enough to take this over, take on that responsibility, the financial responsibilities that go along with it. I, I couldn't agree with Stephen more, there's more going on here than we think.
Well, that's what I'm gonna make, I think that definitely, uh, what we thought. Uh, I agree with this. Um, the other question I have is, they're planning on managing the green space. Right, that, that was part of the agreement. Are there policies and procedures on who can use that space? You know, uh.
There's, there's, there's.
Because part of the right staff, so.
There's an, there's an outline, there are rules and regulations, there is an application process, right? So.
Yes. Okay. Um.
I mean, we offered it to Chamber, so if I hear the Chamber backing, well, why didn't you just take it on? We offered the thing, you know, like three times. There are more workers who need to clean up the dog crap and whatever, they didn't want to play. Now we're back here, earning by fencing and da, 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 I don't get it. You either get in or get out, and we barely had the opportunity.
Okay, right, so. If Chamber wants to do this event, they're supplying all of the labor and volunteer, everything like that, right?
Who's doing it, Farmer's Market or Chamber?
I'm, so there are three separate things here, right? In my mind, there's Farmers Market, which we already made a commitment to.
What?
And I plan on, I'm not committing fully. There's CDB, which has, we gave commitment to, and their plan is to butt up First Fridays by tonight.
Correct. Other than August.
At Green Space. And then there is a third group. Uh, Chamber of Commerce and just Chamber of Commerce, or anybody else associated with that? Chamber? That wants to put on another event on a, on a Thursday. I'm, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking you to do that, I'm not quite sure.
The Chamber and us, we wanted to do something, we did it last year, we had partnered with the architecture, we had partnered with the city. The Chamber is so willing to help us do some things to grow the market.
They wanna do it on Thursday. So. Having it back to back, as Linda said, doesn't make a lot of sense. Okay? You know, uh. Two things on subsequent nights, you know, it's a little bit overkill. But what a problem to have, to have two groups that wanna put on community events. Right? Twice a month. Twice a month where people can get out and do stuff together. After the past two years of being apart from one another and not being able to socialize. Not building community. We have two opportunities a month. Maybe you work every Friday. Right? Maybe that's not an option, maybe you work every Thursday, two different nights a week. That does not seem like a big deal. And I don't see it as competition, I see it as a building of one another. That's all.
That's your point, for the, for the, why didn't we do a second event at all? Besides, it just isn't really out of our control. If CDB or somebody else would have been like, this looks great, let's do another one. If I'm like, yes, that is awesome, that means, like, we are doing so much good in our community, then we can support that. We would have welcomed that, hundred percent. If there was enough people who wanted to do their own events every single Thursday, or every single Friday. We would have been like, that is fantastic, that is what Boon needs. Look at all of the things that people are doing in Boon. We do not see this as a competition. We, when, until the street closure meeting, we were under the impression that the city, the Chamber, and the Farmers Market, we're still gonna work together to do First Thursdays. We didn't know that it was gonna be a Thursday. And it just is what it is, and we can't do it on Friday. Even though that would have been fabulous, if we could all work together. Wonderful. So we just don't want to go backwards in the progress that we made. And we were willing to do a different Thursday, it's fine, right? Our street closure request and the green space request was just an ask. Right? Stay now and that's fine, right? We don't wanna fight about it, we just wanna make things for Boon as realistic. And we want to be able to partner with anybody who wants to help make that happen.
This is Mayor, this is Council. I, I, I'm gonna ask the Council to consider this from the standpoint, what is the payback to the city? What does the city benefit? I don't see it. I know the CDB receives taxpayer money. They have agreed to take on this project. What they earn, they reinvest in this community by promoting it. I mean, we're actually paying them for a service. That they return a service to us. From the standpoint of promoting our community, that's their job. Now, if the objective here is to bring people into town, I have not heard, and I don't think any of you have heard, exactly. How many people do come to town for First Thursdays? Into town that aren't already here? We have businesses downtown, how many bars are downtown? How many? You guys should know.
Three.
I don't know why, I don't know how the Farmers Market for First Thursdays or First Fridays supports those businesses. How does it do that?
People are downtown, they can walk to Wilson's app, too, they can walk to Rooster's.
Exactly, that's my point.
On, on Thursday.
That's my point, why are we so high on promoting Beer Night downtown? When it doesn't really benefit the people who pay the taxes, the people who pay for their properties? Why are we supporting freebys? Because that's exactly what it is.
Boon Valley Brewery's freebys?
No, I'm saying people who come, who are downtown, who come in and drink the beer that's gonna be served.
They pay for it.
They pay for it, where's the money go?
To Boon Valley Brewery.
Well, for First Thursdays, that money, we bought the case, and then at the volunteer groups, the theater, the Rotary.
Were you part of the Arts Council?
No, I was part of the.
Then, but the Arts Council ran First Thursdays.
They did not run First Thursday.
They did run First Thursdays.
The Arts Commission, the Council, and.
They ran First Thursdays.
They did not run First Thursdays.
They're the ones who rented the equipment, they're the ones who rented the green space, they're the ones who didn't pay for anything. The fans, they paid for that.
That was our only thing, the only part of the Arts Commission was that we.
But the.
Local musicians.
The Arts Commission and First Thursdays was politicized. The head of nation ran for mayor, but First Thursdays, we did it. Tell me again why the Arts Commission wasn't, isn't there anymore?
So then, you make a very good point, that there is no Arts Commission.
That's right, because they.
So a group wants to put on an event where people can come together and have a good time, and have sense of community.
CDB for, you hired the CDB to do that.
And they can do that two times a month.
Why? They could.
That's a great opportunity, thank you for pointing that out.
It's under their control, not the city council's control.
Chris, you think this is a threat to what you're doing?
I, I, I do, I mean, it'd be no different than if I wanted to run a new festival the last week in July. I'm, I'm not sure how Chamber would think that was beneficial. I mean, does that benefit us if we have two festivals that are back to back each weekend? It, it doesn't make sense, it's like having two birthday parties for two children in the same house. Just, it, it just, yeah, it, it's unfair to us, I think, until we can get established, because I'm not here to say, maybe next year we'll do two nights, maybe we'll go all four nights. Who knows? We've not had an opportunity to try it, but, uh, it just, back to back nights, it, it's not, it, it doesn't make sense.
But I think that we are not doing back to back nights.
First Thursdays, first Fridays.
The first Thursday should have been, but not clearly, if back clearly.
It is on Thursday.
It'll.
On Thursday.
So the third Thursday is as far apart from the first as you can get. And here's my other situation to that, is amongst our committee, which we've been in progress for three months working on this process. Um, one of the issues is, if we get rained out on Sunday, we might move that, it's not off the, it's not contained for the entire month. And they, they did fortunate last year, they didn't have to cancel any. If we have to cancel one, we've already planned that we would potentially move that for two weeks later. More than we can get entertainment and everything right along. So, uh, that's my issue with, with something, letting another organization run what we wanna do, and then if we have a random.
And if something's on a calendar, months in advance, that would be easier to plan around that, though, right? If you did have to do it one week, is that two weeks? Another thing that I really wanna, I really wanna emphasize is that. You know, we didn't put all of this effort into making the green space so that it's not used. Right, we wanna use it to its fullest possible capacity.
And that's something else. So the, the benefit of having the events in the green space is the benefit to retailers downtown. The, we have a new retail association that we have events for, for sales and activities where we're coordinating with the farmers market. So. There would be a benefit, whether it's on, with the Friday event, or a Thursday event, you know, there. But my other question, I guess, is, what are the street closure plans for that first Friday? So that I can go back to the retail association and let them know what we have to work around.
Well, I'll get you, Linda.
I just wanna understand on something here, so we have two identical events, is that, is that what we have here facing this council? They're identical?
Very similar, I mean, they're not.
It's the same, I think.
That was pretty much.
And not in the same space, we also decided that, that not make our, look like the Friday event. But that would be helpful in, in distinguishing them as different things. Uh, excuse me, I have a board, but I just, uh, but I didn't ask it to you, I asked it to the council. Um, I, my, my concern here is, um, that when I sat here, Mark Sullivan, and vehemently opposed the story of the street being closed. That there was no mention of a Chamber event for the Farmers Market. There was no mention of it being a collaboration, there was no mention, it was just the Farmers Market, it was just. Story Street from eight to seven, if I'm saying the streets, right? There was no mention of the green space, there was no mention of running that, there was no mention, it was just the Farmers Market. So now I stand here and I get word that, oh, Chamber is collaborating with the Farmers Market now. So I have to ask this council, how long do people just get to keep coming and rolling the event and getting it going? Before the council just says, go, get organized, get your stuff together, then come and make a presentation of what you want, and we will approve it? Because that's what frustrates me right now with the council, is that, it's just, is if, you know, they came, they, they put in their application, you approved their application, now they're here again, now they're here again. And that's exactly what happened last year, when a councilperson settled his council. And had conflicting interests between the Chamber, the Arts Commission, and her, the council position. And the city wound up paying for that event, and the taxpayers. Paid that event. So to me, it's always been a city event. It isn't owned by the Arts Commission, it isn't owned by the Chamber, it's owned by the city. When you guys gave up the space, and I was here for that meaning, when you gave up the green space, the event went with it. The CDB deserves the chance to have that, that event, and to see what the community really wants, and let them take the lead, since so many other people are, since the other place, the Chamber turned it down. And stop with the conflict, because we know that the CDB and the Chamber had a divorce. And I think that maybe taking this for a year, letting the CDB have their year, and then if the CDB and Chamber can come back together, then maybe they can consider working together.
Well, I'll get you, but, yeah, this is, I, I'm, I'm just, yeah, listening to this and hearing some about this. I was under the impression, I was so happy, you guys got the straight, right? Right, Mark, sure. Right, so that puts that, right, for the. The other piece is, we, we're working with CDB, they stepped in when Chamber wouldn't step in. I mean, that's done for the years, you got all right, complete control, all rights to whatever happens for events, right? Space, you're gonna run it, you're gonna lease it, you're gonna handle all that stuff, thank you for stepping up and doing that. To me, this is done. And I don't know what we're doing, and in a year, that gives other stuff potentially time to gotta think about, how do I wanna approach? Or with Chris, because she. Or with Chris, because she. But for a year, you let them work. That's what I thought we were doing. Somehow we're all, we're on center. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I think they deserve the opportunity to have it here. It takes at least that long. To kind of get the feeling, feel where things are going to go, price point, all that kind of. You know, same thing for you guys in the before, but for this year, I think a lot did until I presented with them, and to you guys in the part.
So we just kind of need to know what that looks like. Like, does that look like CDB has green space and the art, art story and all of that for Fridays? And for that part for fall, summer? Does that, does that look like we could do something that didn't look like that? Does it look like we just, whatever we can kind of do in our little one-lot space? This, I mean, honestly, I say, we don't want to fight about it. We kind of, we have the pain, we just have to know. Okay? We want to grow the market, benefit everybody, so we just, we just need to know. There doesn't.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think anybody's guessed that.
How we figure that out.
But I do, yeah, I think what EJ is saying is, you, we've given you your street closure, okay? That's where it ends.
I have one final question. On the green space, is that open to anyone from Rent That? Because it is a park, I mean, right? I, I know we don't use that word. It's not, it's green space. But can anyone rent that, just like they can rent the, uh, any of our parks?
City, it would be out of discretion to CDB.
And doesn't that follow city policy that it's open? I mean, I just said, if I want to have a birthday party there, and I paid a hundred dollars, and I rent the green space.
Well, first of all, you wouldn't contact the city. We have a contract with CDB. It's theirs.
Right, so I'm, I'm bringing that question to anyone that's in Rent That.
And if it's, if it, if it makes sense.
And if it makes sense to our organization. It has to make sense to our organization. So do you have that defined, so people know what the policy is? Okay, so there is.
Many situations has definitely made us, yeah.
Aware that, yeah, that needs to be defined, so that people know, yes, this is an appropriate use of that space. Know this is, I think we need that, so we don't get caught in this committee times.
Yeah, that's part of that, yeah. But we also need to keep in mind, we, we work hard to try to find somebody to take this over. When's the change? When's the change?
Yeah.
They stepped out to take this thing on, so I think, to be fair to them, we have to, that's why we have a contract. We allow them to do what they believe is, I mean.
The commitment is there.
I just think it's only getting better. Do you have a question back there?
Um, maybe you don't know me. My name is Jay. I've run events for over twenty years. It is, it warms my heart to hear about events happening in communities that need events. In my mind, these events are slightly different, where you're sporting, you know, maybe a different musician one night, a different musician one night, uh, different things you can purchase at this event or this event. And I just sense a synergy of more events makes, makes great community, you know, together, so I, I would hope there would be three different things you could do in one month, or different things. You know, obviously, there's some larger events that happen a couple times a year, but, you know, I, I just enjoy seeing events happen.
The only issue I have is, I would hope that last year, when the city was in control of the green space, if somebody were to come to us and said, look, you want to hold an event on the first Wednesday of every month within the summer. We're gonna have alcohol, we're gonna have entertainment, we're gonna have pretty much many of what First Thursday was. I would hope that this council was able, that's a con of the winner. Now, we want to schedule a second event, not knowing if the first event is going to be successful. Now, we're asking to schedule a second event now, not knowing if CDB is going to be successful, and run the risk of both of them being unsuccessful.
Let's flip this around the other way. We already knew a Thursday event would work in this format. So now the Friday event is tacked on to that. That's the additional event.
The Thursday event does not exist anymore.
No, we, we have proof of concept that it worked last night.
It worked for one.
Concept, I mean, as it exists.
But it, it worked, it worked for Farmer's Market.
Yeah, I can say a lot of things that prove the concept.
It worked for all of the people that went down and enjoyed it.
Okay, well, that's not everybody.
If you went down, how does that tie in?
Okay, we're gonna move on. Honestly, it's not on the agenda that just.
Sorry, yeah.
No, it's fine, but we need some type of consensus, so.
Okay. Well, contractually, we cannot override the decisions. Is that correct? Contractually, we cannot override their decisions. Is that correct? Yeah. If they decide whether or not to have it, we cannot override their decisions. Is that correct?
Wow, thank you, of course.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is it fair to say that if somebody wants to rent for whatever purpose, a green space or close off that street for an event, they need to contact the CDB or not the city council? Is that it? Is that a consensus you go with your board?
That's what it is. The green space, the Farmer's Market is wanting to expand from the Story Street to expand Seventh Street. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, we applied to go up Ninth Street. Our other request was going to come down.
And then you're going to rent down there. That's a whole different issue. So it's two events, and she believes, Chris believes it could affect her event, is the question I ask, but she does. So. Is it only fair to assign somebody had to do something, then all of a sudden we go, okay, hey, we're gonna have another event? That's just my opinion. We're not really on that anyways. Building professional agents.
Engineer.
Uh, finance officer under head. Uh, C30, yeah. Uh, public works, John Ross.
Yes, Your Honor. The package is a resolution for the Southland and East Street project. Uh, we had that engineering estimate a hundred twenty thousand, and we got one two one fifteen, one two two six, fifty. And we need approval, we have managed up to the one fifteen seventy three. All of them.
Bert?
Yeah.
Again?
Yes.
So.
Yes.
Want it?
Yes.
Whatever?
Yes.
Yes, right?
Yes. It should be done hopefully by June. Okay, you're right on it, so I'm hoping that, whether it's anywhere. So let's. Thank you. Uh, engineer. Thank you, sir.
So in the package, it's a resolution plus an agreement with SEH Engineering, Seh Design, and another project, Stop Marion, in West Park. The cost of this agreement with SEH is just over three hundred and one thousand dollars. The estimate, at least initial estimate for the cost of the construction of this project is one point seven five. So the amount of SEH is within Engineering Guidelines from X Projects. Uh, they plan to have a letting of this project next February. Looking at all kinds of preliminary design, design, see if there's any right-of-way space that we can purchase. I don't think there is, but that'll, uh, find that out in the survey. So this agreement that's in the package, uh, need your approval, you see on the resolution, I'll tell you some of the things. But the preliminary design is the field survey, the final design, and then construction management, six hundred and fifty hours. Any questions that you have? What do you think about the contract with SEH?
Yes, I just, I didn't get any time for the meeting, but I'm Mike Dameron with SEH, so I'm just here in case there's any questions. I thought I'd just stop up. I was actually looking at the school project too, so it's good to be up here. So if you have any questions on here, I can help answer them.
Is not a need.
You're the pirate.
Again? Sorry?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes, Bert?
Yes. Okay, all the same, Chief Battle?
Yes, Your Honor, just two quick things. Uh, with the weather pattern that we've been having, and, uh, some native prairie within the city limits, um, I have issued a few burn permits, uh, for those to be able to get burned off because of the weather patterns. Most of them are on the fringes of town. They don't bother. Um, just FYI, and they're, they're trying to fit them in as we get rain and things dry out, so it's a, it's a up and down situation. Uh, the second one that I'm gonna look for a little guidance from council is, uh, I received a call from a contractor who was trying to work with a property owner. Uh, they had some damage from a derecho, uh, situation last, really the first one, then the second derecho in, in December. Uh, and they're wanting to, uh, basically grub the whole area, get rid of it, clean it up, those kind of things. It falls within the city limits. The, the, the biggest issue that I see with it is that the fire's gonna have to burn. They're gonna dig a, a hole on the property, put the trees in there. The fire's gonna have to burn for a while, uh, probably a couple of days to get everything burned out. Um, my concern was with burning for a couple of days, most everything, we tried to get everything burned out within that day. Um, I'm kind of torn a little bit because they're trying to clean up all the stuff, but at the same time, it could be a nuisance. Um, I, it, it's on Airport Road, um, the property is, uh, if the wind was out of the wrong direction, it could blow towards, uh, uh, the subdivision there to the, to the west. Um, so I guess I look at a couple options. If you tell me no, you'd rather not have that, that's fine. Um, two is they could try to burn in a wind condition that would not, would, would, uh, minimalize, uh, the exposure to, um, uh, neighboring residents or, um, they could kind of have at it, so. Uh, I'm probably right in the middle right now of like, if they could play the wind, burn it in a little bit smaller piles, not burn, not try to burn it all at once, so that we're burning down a little bit more. Um, I, I think that's, that's kind of where I, I feel like we could lie at a safe. But I, I knew that, I know that you guys will get the complaints, not me, so that's why I, I'd like.
You can put some conditions on it.
Absolutely, yes, yeah, absolutely. But if there was hard nose, I, I would be good, I, I, you know, so. All right, thank you.
Uh, Chief Legal?
No, more.
Uh, C30, your bill. The package is a resolution, uh, in regards to employee agents. Uh, to give some background, uh, our maintenance person will also get inspections. For the city, he was here about three years, uh, as he resigned his position, and returned his position, uh, to do what he was doing here, uh, for considerably more money. Uh, so as you know, Angel's gonna retire at the end of June, I believe, with this year, May, sorry. Uh, well, with this chairman leaving, and then, uh, that is, um, day base, as we've talked in here before, taking, when he retires, it just left us in a, an invaluable spot. When you consider the destruction of the new, early childhood school, the school road, the school on West Eighth Street, in addition to the start of the forty unit LMI private twenty-second of Lynn, I, I just couldn't have believed it quite frankly. So I went to him and discussed with him, delaying his retirement a year. Uh, he went home and took some time and talked with his family. He came back, uh, to delay for a year with this request of, of five thousand dollars of compensation, his pay to stay. I certainly think that it's worth it. I will tell you that this person that left, we talked about upping his pay to get him to stay as well, and it was more than, uh, just a little bit of what he asked, of what, uh, looking at it, fifty to a hundred, or certain things. So. I pray this to you for approval. And I have to, any more questions you have, and just one update on the maintenance project, that, the maintenance position. We advertised it. We had two applications. One application, uh, subject to not be allowed follow directions, not allowed how it's supposed to be, or submit, or give results to their level. One application, we interviewed that, uh, person, and he brings with him over thirty years and makes this experience. And that resolution hired him, which was. So with that, I'll answer any questions you have, regardless of this. Otherwise, I think it's all just. All right. Call roll.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Don't worry.
Yes.
Twice? Yes, right?
Yeah.
Bert?
Yeah.
Again?
Yes.
Couple, uh, of updates, uh, at the May eighteenth council, or C30, or C30, you will have a change order for the exterior wall project. Uh, as they began that project, they found more bricks that needed to be replaced. Uh, so it will change the order of seven hundred and sixty dollars. All change orders need to be approved, but I will tell you, I gave SEH permission to, to then continue the project with that. But the change order will come, uh, to. My last thing is, uh, councilperson Williams asked, uh, to look at, uh, uh, compensation for councilpeople and mayor here at the city. An initial doggy on my radar will show that compensation for our department head, um, where they compare with other white cities. Uh, staff's been a lot of time on research and that. There's two ways you could have done it. Have staff do it, or pay the company fifteen thousand, two thousand to do it. It, it did make sense to spend money on that when we could do it ourselves. I think it did a really good job doing it. So as an update on that, that will be coming forward here in the next few weeks. I will tell you that I believe the mayor will leave Wednesday, uh, to discuss it, and his input is what I'll report right. And I'll answer any questions you have.
And I think my question was, where we all ranked was, you know, uh, compared to comparable sized cities? And, uh, I guess I, my question was, are we, uh, where I would like my intent is not that we are the lowest date of the council people around, because it is. But we're also not the highest date, um, and are we about the middle or the average? And that, that's, that's one question that started this, is kind of where, where do we fall?
And it fell along with what I had a minor to do as well. I guess I got to a younger question.
You mentioned Department head.
This. Yes, Department.
Right, and so what, what we will see is two different things. So we've, there's always been where you can't compare yourself to the metro, of the metro. And we understand, we understand that, but we group the metro in, so you'll get two, one of the white cities, one of the metro. And the reason why we took that, we're not that we say, oh, our department should make what they make in the metro. The reason it was put in there is that you can work in the metro and still live there because of the, so there, yeah, you could choose. Well, we did, we lost two points so far to the metro for that reason. So that's the reason we put it just for you to look at, or not, not in any sense saying, our department should be paying what they may need in the metro. That's not, it's just looking at, see, for years, most cities have mileage restrictions, so like, if you work in the morning, you could live, go five miles. A lot of them have gotten rid of their mileage, so they've gotten rid of their mileage. We changed ours. Yeah, we just changed our, I mean, there's.
And I think those are, you have to kind of keep them up.
Yeah.
Up to date, I mean, where you, you have it, and you are, we kind of square.
Yeah, and we have not done one to this, it's, it's pretty embarrassing. Since I have been sitting in this chair, I have not. That's all I have, I think I've. Okay, I'm six consent agenda, or I haven't like consent agenda, and you want this removed and discussed separately, and if not, any motion to approve. Second. All of them.
Martin?
Yes.
Go Piper?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Bert? Again?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Number seven, we have nothing seen, number eight, under my comments, we put discuss six twenty-eight story.
Very good. And I. We had one last time about just that lot. And I know we have the green space and I kind of thought was the brown space, but you won't hang with that name. And, and the question I had was just what's next for that space that we've got sitting there? And I broke down a couple of options. I'm discussing these out for us to think about as well as food for thought. If anyone else has ideas that we should consider, could be good if they bring those forward. So the first one is, and as we all know, this is six twenty-eight story, we're fairway sidewalks. And number one, the first one is take the same plan, same location, and run it up through a vote again. If it was defeated, we are required to wait six months before we can put such proposal up for a vote again. So we would wait that time, record it up again, see if we can go through it. That's one. The second one, come up with a new plan, same location. So we're using the same, but get a new plan. So that, we would look at a new architectural firm, a new design comes out of that. And see what that would look like. So, you know, on the assumption, maybe that plan, design wasn't directed. Number three, the new plan, the new location. So we start over. We decide where would a wellness community center work, where would be a new spot for it? And the city will still have their lot to deal with, but this would be kind of start over. The fourth, redo or remodel the old Y. I'm always cautious when I get into that one because I was involved in that building. And I know that building needs a lot, but you know, when this vote was going through, that continues to be in a lot of people's mind, why aren't we fixing up the old Y? Why don't we use that location? So I think we have to realize that's still, that's still out there. And people wonder if we were looking at that option and maybe we need to pursue, what would that look like? What would that take? That's not a inexpensive option either. That building requires a lot. My assumption is, I think there is asbestos in it. I mean, it was going to take at least several million dollars, perhaps more. I mean, it was, I don't know that it was paid, but it was several million.
I ran, I ran all the numbers on this based on the Congress.
And have, yeah.
And architects.
Fairway, Fairway, in kind, they had their construction.
They did. They made, they did a walkthrough for us and gave us an estimate on the boiler and all those things. That and so generously, they fought them to do that. So they, they were involved in that time. But that, that, once again, is something that still comes up is why don't we, why don't we do that? We don't know how to do it. Why does the city doesn't roll that location? So I mean, that's a problem right there, but, but you know, that, that is still in my mind. The fifth option is do nothing. I mean, nothing, but we don't have a community center. We don't have a wellness center. We don't pursue that. I personally think the city needs something like that to attract young people, to attract people into our community as well as our seniors and all of us would benefit from it. The one thing that, that I did hear when we were out before the vote, people would say, why should I have to pay for it? I'm not going to use it. I think that's something we have to consider. I, you know, I'm, I'm kind of about that. I think it has thirteen parks. I've been in one, maybe two of those parks. I don't, don't use all the parks, but that's part of the community. So we have to, I don't know if you have to regroup and get more people involved, more public involved to get their input. Rather than say, here's a plan, approve it or disapprove it. And, and right now, they, they did not go along with that. So that was just my, my thoughts on this is what's next.
Those were all good points. Can we field this a little bit? We got six twenty-eight story, we got wellness center. There's some, there's some intersection there, right? Based upon a previous plan, but they're not getting strictly linked. So let's take, let's take a look at six twenty-eight story street first because that's the thing that's, that's got caught ticking on, right? That, that's something, I mean, you've already put money into, you know, the building that was there, we tried to deal with for a long time, many, many different ways. Whether or not a new concept will work there for wellness center or the existing one, trying again, I don't know. But I think that having it sit there in the current state is not going to do us any favors if we didn't have a goal in mind for it. So really, I think looking for requests or proposals from, from private, private entities to get, get that going as fast as possible might be your best way forward there.
Just to see what some options are.
Yeah, commercials, yeah, commercials phrase the space in one variety and not for another. See if there's a hunger for that. Some, some private company to take, take ownership of it and build something there that, that, that area. That's my, you know, my gut feeling right now, be the best.
Six twenty-eight story outside in there. Now, they seem to be marketing, marketing heavily. I mean, I, I was hoping it would be a law surter. I don't think we can take it back to the vote for your asking. City runs it, obviously, city funds are not free. It's, no, the truck isn't back under their tax dollars. So I think by asking for a franchise fee, he said, oh, no, this time we're gonna go property taxes, I think, trip out. You tell me what we've done to better our position, I guess they'll see it. Now, who can find a way to pay for it?
We need to do more fundraisers upfront. Because we do have, you know, we do have Fairway, a big contribution right there. And that was, that was pretty much as far as we went with that because then, you know, we could certainly see what, what else the community was.
There was possible commitments. Once it passed, they just didn't want them to name it up.
And a lot of them we cannot pursue, yeah.
Well, we did actually pursue, but they didn't. They go, hey, if it passes, yeah, we're right.
And so if we.
They don't want it. Unless they're.
Yes. If we can come up with four or five billion out of that, then so.
Yeah, but what I see there is the other part. Chicken and man. You got five managers will pay their part, which will be, you know, six by that.
You have, there's, you have a couple of options. One, you raise, you have a whole twelve million, because it's twelve hundred dollars, we're still in that. Raise the whole twelve million. Don't worry about voting the vote. But you raise as much money as you possibly can. You can put a nuclear option, you can do it anywhere. Taking this to a vote is an exercise in control. Given the backlash that we've got. The way they voted. I agree with the mayor. I don't think, unless we take a whole approach to this, that we can pass a law. So if we raise six million dollars and go ahead and do this, it can be done without taking it to a vote if the consequences stem. Okay? I personally, I have no desire whatsoever to even attempt renovating the old one. That's an eight million dollar money bid. And you're gonna end up with a small gymnasium and a track that's unloosened.
I'm on the same page. I hope this gets through.
Let's keep that in mind right now. Let's get this off the table so that it's not an issue. Okay, location, we have to, if we have to decide, are we gonna do six twenty-eight or are we gonna pick another location? We have to make that decision. Okay? Because if we don't pick six twenty-eight, are we abandoning downtown? We say, okay, maybe we can build this, maybe we can put some retail space in there, maybe we can do this, maybe we can do that. Are we gonna abandon downtown and focus our efforts out south? Because that's what's there will appear. Well, no matter what location you pick, if you're talking about the land, then they're gonna say, oh, it went outside. So that's okay, but the council has to make those decisions before we start doing any location, how we're gonna finance. Set that, set that in motion first. Do we still want it? That's the number one question. Does everybody around this table still want it? And are we all gonna be on the same page or are some of us gonna work behind the scenes to defeat?
I will tell you this, as a group of, I'll call older business people in this community, some in business, some not, just don't want anything for well. It's just the way it's been. It's why you have what you have, okay? I'm not, not because I think what we do have is good. I would like to see grow a little bit. No, but there's just a, there's a negative root of that. The city shouldn't do that. You do that. No, all's I heard about was parking, 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 that part. Fix that. So that's, those are, I think, any location, you're gonna have a claim on. So that does, it comes down to location one. Everybody's gotta be on board, you know, but I just don't know that.
Well, six twenty-eight is, the history of six twenty-eight, it was always our intention to vote. When the first, when the original Wellness Committee that Linda sat on, Eli sat on, Holly and Jen, all those people that sat on that committee, six twenty-eight was a number one priority for that location.
No, no. And what we talked about.
No, wait a minute. That's not true. Six twenty-eight was the prime location for that. We talked about the Y first. We put that to bed because the mayor didn't have any interest in renovating the Y. We went to six twenty-eight and the old Y. I have drawings of it, Eli. I have drawings of the, of the old Y. That was, that was the location we're gonna do. What happened was, is when we realized that it was gonna take two years, maybe longer to get that location because of the owner. And then COVID hit. We, before COVID hit, we decided on the Y because mayor said, look, Y is a piece of property we own, right? Aaron and I had that discussion. Y is a piece of property owned. We can move that location there. So then we went over there because we didn't want to wait to three years. Enter COVID. COVID knocked us down for eighteen months. In the interim, that location being available, we jumped on it, we got it, and we moved it.
How much do you have? Did something.
I just wanted to ask, does the Fairway money go wherever the location is or is specified for six twenty-eight?
I can't speak, but that's a good question. I don't find out though. That is a good question.
That's, I just wondered.
No, that's fair. I think they assume we're still looking at that property, but I'm not gonna speak for them and say, I don't know. That's gotta point that out. Yeah, we'll find out. Good question.
Don't keep making it, like, important in the whole site.
Read here.
Whole site.
Oh, yeah, no. I think I want to follow up with the terrace. I think the question is, he said, does the council want it? The bigger question is, does the community want it? Because the vote wasn't about what we wanted in the contract. It's the fact that we didn't want to pay.
That way.
We didn't want to pay. So I, I, I don't think we really know what the community actually wants. These are all fair questions. I don't understand. I don't know where to go next. I don't think the community and I don't really have that much of a vote. I still think that works.
I don't think the same plan, the same, you know, I don't, yeah.
Then you, we get into the architect, do this, that, that's funny. Something we don't know, the best. I don't think a plan is issued. Yeah. Picture me, most of you like, so really, thinking one way, it works, they're gonna have to pay for it. Now, telling the tenant, without having to take a vote.
I, I don't like that. I, I raised the test. I, not having, I don't know, not having public input one way or another is just a, that's just a field for me. You know, you can, we can, you can talk to the people that we talk to, we can, you know, people supplied with and who communicate with us. You never really get a true sense until you get that vote. And I, I mean, really, really, you know. Even unless somebody came out on their own with a big request and did it all, then that's something. But, you know, as far as us pushing it in that manner, right?
And I know the plan, yeah, the design plans, people that I talked to, they had, well, why is this here? And, and so, yes, I think, I think public input was maybe we needed more of that, but people felt they had to save.
Yeah, I can't believe how many meetings you have. You had more meetings at the elementary school than.
I'm taking second with that. How many meetings did I hold, public meetings? And advertised and got input? How much more do you want?
I don't know. People felt it was presented. This is kind of how it is. And then, so then we did a little, but I don't, I don't know. People just felt it.
Here, like, my meetings was all public input. What do you want? I don't wanna see.
Not all people, sorry, not all people. The people, you know, I, I don't public meetings, I felt satisfied. But I think you have to, I think we have to stop, stop doing this. We need to open our mind and be more global then. The people in this community had a chance to vote. They voted it down for whatever reason. I think it is about the money. They didn't want their money to go up, and there was a candidate against that. And I think that's both flower. And so I think we have to be fair. Everybody in the city had a chance to vote.
Oh, lady on the vehicle, same meetings again this fall. See, you can show up.
Yeah, I think your question is, yeah.
You can just see your options.
That's where we're at, right now.
But we, we need, we need to raise the money or we need to put your options there. If Eli doesn't have the stomach for that and other council members don't have the stomach for that, then it's bad.
Yeah. I think as far as it's really about. Good work of angels. Get some ideas, and then people might want to know.
If we can progress there, then we need to progress there. And I think it might behoove us to take a beat to really think more, you know, more politically about the community sort of thing. Is it, you know, something that we want? I think so, in theory, right? We all, we all approved plans to go forward, sat on the committee. And do we need to be the ones that advance as government funding? No, maybe not. Maybe somebody else needs to take the role. And we can let.
How many years have we been rolling something outside?
The correct, exactly. You know, you can see what time allows us and keep, keep the idea, keep, you know, the ultimate goal of having a place where people from all walks of life can have a healthy, healthy lifestyle.
So I'm saying, you're right for the first scales. Well, you're the one who said also I had it.
We've got, I mean, still started great prior. If you would try to do what I had written, years and years and years prior to, you know, the Y voting and everything like that, you know, it was goal setting twenty eighteen, I think, they started this. So let's, let's move forward. Let's progress. See what happens.
We'll just keep having discussions. Yeah, yeah, yeah.